The Red Line Narratives Podcast is your go to for understanding how Boston's infrastructure plans impact all of us. We discuss everything from zoning to community planning, to complicated engineering terms, ties to historical redlining and urban renewal, and even the cultural implications of development. It's all about making sense of complex topics and ensuring that you have an informed voice in these changes. We'll be having special guests, city officials, experts, you name it, in order to help us answer the questions so we can make positive changes in our communities. So let's lock in and hit these streets. Welcome. Welcome everyone to the Red Line Narratives Podcast. My name is Marlon Solomon, and I'll be your host today. Today, we have a very special podcast because we have Boston City Councilor, District Four, Brian Worrell. I try to make it like we bring you into the stadium. How you doing, brother?
I'm doing amazing. Thanks for having me today.
Nice, nice, nice. Yes, I'm very excited to have you. We had Councilor Tanya Worrell here earlier. So that was awesome. I mean, I mean, Tanya Anderson here earlier, and that was awesome. She, we talked all about the development without displacement. And so we're just glad to have you on. It's just important for people out there to see that there are people, you know, that hear them, that want to, that are doing the hard, hard work. I don't envy any, any of the stuff that y'all do. I see y'all, I see how y'all be doing on the schedules, and I'm like, man, it's tough. So we appreciate you. So for Black History Month, you know, we've been doing this Boston redlining, you know, Black History Month event series. So it marks the 87th anniversary of the Boston Red Line, which was issued very first 1938. And so, you know, it's the beginning of Black History Month. It's such, you know, it's about, you know, kind of the work I do. I'm a civil engineer, and I kind of like develop systems for the community. And, you know, so our, our theme this year was development without displacement. And your, you know, the work that you did with the, that accountability hearing on the 21st, right? That was just awesome. To hear everybody come in community, and to hear everybody what they were saying. So we use that galvanizing information to like coalesce at least like, you know, like five different areas, you know. And we, we started out with a few demands, you know, mapping and other things like the zoning changes. But for all in all, you know, we've been doing this work, but also telling the history. We've been, we, this, we've been actually following the displacement pattern of African Americans from the North End to the West End, from the West End to the South End, and this, this event series, right? And we have a documentary, we, you know, and even next week, we're gonna have our symposium, which will end it all. So it's really exciting this time of year for Black History Month, especially what's going on with Black History, but tying in the past and the new, creating spaces like this Health of Equity Symposium, where we are providing safe spaces for the community leaders, and people who want to get involved to get some self-care. Is, you know, you know, so we have, you know, so that's what we've been up to. This is one of the events we did last week, like I was telling you, and it's about development without displacement as well. I took the hearing, listened to what everybody said from Dorchester, from Rosendale, from everywhere. And what I said was, okay, look, let's put all this information together with the Community Input Board of Hyde Park, Rosendale Coalition, you know, and a few other people that have been working with us in Hyde Park. And we came up with the positive zoning efforts, which is really about, you know, the, you know, because of the rush of how things have been going, and there should be anti-displacement policies before, a lot of zoning changes happened, community education. There was, you can see here, we have some models that we had made. This event we did last week was to share strategies between the different groups in Boston on how to organize, how to educate people on squares and streets, set measurable success metrics, what should they be looking for. And we're putting together and addressing the affordability crisis, and then of course, with, you know, AMI, and how difficult that is, explaining that. Then, of course, ongoing community engagement. How do we, how does the BPDA work with the community groups so that they can, you know, gaze? And that brings us to why we're gonna kind of make a toolkit, you know, for other community members to be able to learn from different strategies from different locations, you know, on how they can organize their communities. So, you know, we've been doing a lot of work on this, and we're just glad that you are there representing on the level. And this question that, you know, the way you phrased this question is extremely, the question I'm about to clip, I'm about to play. It was really great because I do a lot of work in cultural design for, like, designing structures with culture in mind. And what you said was so great. So y'all, let's see Brian in, in, in action. It's awesome.
You know, there's, there's so much data and reports that I constantly have these conversations with the Planning Department around the need for family-style housing in our community, the ability to address the wealth gap, you know, equity is part of the mission statement for the Planning Department. One way, you know, we all know one of the fastest ways to address the wealth gap is the ability to buy a home, so the creation of homeownership, right? Like, how are we prioritizing not only the needs when it comes to family-style housing? Because, you know, there's plenty of data, and I just want to read this real quickly. There's a report that the BPDA, the Planning Department, did around the Boston Housing Conditions and Real Estate Trends Report states that smaller renter households, one- and two-person households are more likely to be white, whereas larger renter households, especially those with five or more residents, are primarily Latinx, Black, or Asian. So how is our zoning code in Squares and Streets prioritizing the creation of that? Another report that kind of points out the same thing is the Boston's Inclusionary Development Policy Analysis, and it highlights that 63% of owner households and 86% of renter households with five or more individuals are by park. So furthermore, speaks to the need of family-style housing within Black and Brown neighborhoods. To Councilman Anderson's point, it's like, is that data, right? Is that need presented to the community so that they know when they're having these conversations about the zoning, what they're voting for, and who, right? Because we know inventory, you know, decides who lives here and who gets displaced. Is that given to them? Thank you.
Yes. Wait one second. I love all that.
I love all that, too. I love, especially your data. When anybody starts kicking numbers, I'm very attentive. You know, we appreciate. So can you elaborate more on that, you know, the family-style housing and the work you've been doing around that?
Absolutely. But I got a quick question for you before I dive into that question. Where are you originally from, Marlon?
Well, I was, I'm an African American that was raised in Nigeria. My dad is Nigerian, but my mom's from Virginia.
Got it, got it. No, I hear a little accent.
A little something, something.
Creeping in. I thought it was, I didn't know where it was, but I almost thought it was a Bayesian accent.
Really? Okay. No, 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 no.
I hear it. I hear it. I hear it. Nigerian now, though.
Right. He's Nigerian. And then, like I said, you know, I know, my mom's from, my mom's from Virginia. So it's a kind of a mix of those.
I hear it. I hear it. I definitely hear it. But yeah, thank you again for having me here. And what I was alluding to was, or speaking to, is that there's so many reports that the City of Boston has around housing. And there's also just so much data at our fingertips, whether it's around, you know, income levels, or who, who is leaving the City of Boston. And what I was trying to point out to the Planning Department, formerly known as the BPDA, is that when we are approving or speaking to developers, because, you know, a lot of the developers have to go through either the Planning Department, or, you know, get their projects approved by the ZBA, like, when these projects are getting built, and when they're seeking approval or seeking guidance from the city or from the quasi-agencies, like, how are we, as a city or the Planning Department, how are we taking a look at that data that we pay for and is at our fingertips?
Right, right.
Right? And, and creating the type of inventory, right, that we know certain communities need in order to stay in the City of Boston. And also, we're taking that data and creating wealth, right? We know one of the fastest ways to accumulate wealth is through the purchase of homes. But if we're not building the housing inventory, right, then we don't create that opportunity for, you know, working class and young professionals to be able to buy here. And we're talking about buying in one of the strongest real estate markets in the country, right?
The world, the world.
Right. Like, it's like, it's like, we have the ability, right, to kind of have these conversations with developers around creating the inventory that is needed in order to reach our goals, right? I mean, part of the, you know, part of my question was that in your goal, in your mission statement, you know, you are pointing to equity, you are pointing to stabilizing families, right? Like, so, like, these are the ways, right, in my mind, right? Like, what is the fastest way to accumulate wealth? And what's the best form of stability, you know, is, you know, ownership and homeownership for both. So we just alluded to that. And then also, like, when, when you're, when you're going to these meetings, and you're asking people to vote on, or to give their input on something that is so crucial, right? Like, something that is gonna determine who's able to live, who's able to stay in Boston, who's able to accumulate wealth in Boston, right? Like, are you giving them all the information that you have so that they are aware, right, on, on the type, on how it all works together? So that, that was the other part of it as well.
No, no, it's great. These are great points, you know, as from, looking from the engineer point of view. See, I can, you know, based on that data, I can design people out of the community. And it will look like, well, everybody has an opportunity to get it, but it was it. My family is, like you said, our families are bigger. So if you build two to three-bedroom houses and say, well, hey, there you go, I built the housing, you're actually very, very cleverly designing exclusion into the concrete and to the walls. And that, yeah, and then that's the premise of this, you know, this work. And that's why when I picked up on that, I was so, so, so very impressed. I obviously, this man has been doing his homework, because that's exactly the, the point I've been raising, you know. So like, you know, one of the things about growing up in Nigeria is that I've been, I've lived and been doing engineering, you know, working for my uncles, and, you know, very accomplished architects in Nigeria. I've been in the construction space and places, in spaces that are designed by, for us. So when I come here, I make that compare and contrast as to what are the types of facilities, or what percentage of certain facilities that make this holistic hub, this cultural hub. And when, so like, if you, I've heard this, I haven't been there, but I've heard very clearly that they do have like larger porches in the Dominican Republic, because Dominican culturally like to hang outside with their family, you know? And it's, you know, like grandma be there, uncle, everybody be outside, that, that's their culture. So, and then they, you know, and then they're gonna be there, and they're, you know, having a good time. Yeah, some people may see us loud, but that's because of the tight quarters and the kind of ways that you can actually design these problems into community. So I'm just very happy to, you know, that you're looking at that. And what feedback, what challenges have you gotten, you know, to actually like trying to, you know, affect that change to make it so that we are looking for multi-generational housing?
Yeah. And one of the things that, you know, we constantly hear is the amount of assistance, right, that is, is set aside to help create homeownership. There's not a lot of, you know, financial products, like, so from the bank, like, there's more products, there's more loans, there's more subsidies when you're creating rental housing, right? When you're creating rental housing. And then also, the, the individual, the owner, the developer who's creating that rental housing, they are holding on to an asset, right? So they don't want to let go of an asset, and they are creating, you know, passive income for that, for that owner.
But at the same time, they're encouraging non-ownership, because you're just keeping people, you know, that rental cycle, right?
And then, and then we hear that it doesn't pencil, right? Like, so meaning like, if you add more three bedrooms to this project, you get less units, which is, you know, project not able to turn a profit for the owner. So those are the things in the process that we get when we're speaking to developers. And, you know, sometimes we, you know, they say that the layout doesn't work, right? But we, we constantly push, you know, for these three bedrooms in every development that comes through my, comes through District Four, because I represent the blackest and brownest district in the City of Boston. And if the numbers are telling me that this is what my community needs, right? This is, this is what I have to push, whether, you know, it pencils or whether or not. We have to find a way. But like, that's the information that we have to give our community, so that when I'm pushing for, on it for the developer, and the developer might need to go up one extra level in order for it to pencil, that the community needs to understand, like, this is what inventory is needed. It's the type of housing that is needed in order for work for the developer and keep us in our neighborhood.
No, no. And I, I completely conclude that. You know, one thing I wanted to say is also that, it's also that even the system itself is encouraging it not to be profitable. If, if that, you know, it's like, you know, it's like, this economies have been going for a while now, and they are just structured that way. So the materials, all the things have all balanced out to that equation. But I just tell you that it's not, it's just because of the value that the people who are designing place in certain things. So they don't even know how to cost for it, right? Or, you know, or, you know, what was I gonna say?
No, no, you're absolutely right. And we, what we also try to do is solve, solve for that. And through collaboration with the mayor's administration, with the mayor and her administration, we stood up an accelerator fund, which helps with the cost. So the city will now be an investor in a development project to help alleviate some of the costs associated with building, you know, some of these large projects. You know, we heard about the labor prices, you know, increasing. We heard about interest rates increasing. So borrowing money is now more expensive. Material cost is more expensive. So we heard all that, and that's why we saw production grind to a halt. But what we did was set up an accelerator fund to help get production going. But when we dove back into the numbers, and we go back to the homeownership, what we saw that 90%, right, it's thirty, say, say it's around 30,000 approved development in the City of Boston. There's 30,000 projects that are approved but not yet built. And what we saw when we looked at that 30,000 approved but not yet built, was that 90%, 90% of those approved projects were rental projects. 90%. So that means only 10% was slated for homeownership. And then you add that, right, to the sixty, because the Boston is a city full of renters, you add that to the 66%, right, that the city is renters, and it continues, right? It continues to make a city just full of renters, and it, it doesn't give our community, you know, the working-class community, a lot of people, the opportunity to own a home, like what we said earlier, was one of the best real estate markets in the country.
The world. Yes.
It's like, so we're still creating, like, you know, a lot of, you know, we're giving the owner of the development, we're giving them more wealth and not being able to spread that across, give people, working class, young professionals, that opportunity to own here in this great real estate market.
No, no, that's great. That is exactly it. I was gonna actually shift it a little bit. Okay, because, you know, in the community, and I, you know, and this is kind of goes to the work I'm doing around cultural hubs. You know, I'm very keen on trying to get people involved in clusters of cultural economic activity. So like Chinatown, or like, you know, North End, and of course, that lends itself to, you know, tourism. So, you know, I have some developed tours that we're working on here at the organization. But the, the idea that somewhere like Matapan, we should just take off that word off the red line and put Little Haiti, and try to promote it in that regard, where we're trying to, you know, increase the, you know, you know, we're trying to increase the culturally generated revenue. You guys might call it culturally, you know, IGR, internally generated revenue. But I look at it more from the cultural economic thing, because you see, when you have a cluster, it like markets itself in a big, you know, like Newberry Street, you don't know where you're going. You know, Chinatown, we don't know where we're going. We're just going to Chinatown. When we get there, we'll pop in where we fit in, you know, we'll have fun, you know. So Matapan is one, you know, Dorchester Vietnamese is another one that's going Eagleson Square, becoming a Dominican one, you know. So what, you know, what are your, you know, you know, your, you know, your feelings, I guess, on trying to promote, you know, some cultural, you know, economic zones, you know, in our community where we can have some? Because we need to increase the, you know, people don't need to be going outside for jobs. They need to be entrepreneurs in their community, but we need that space.
Absolutely. No, I think you hit, hit, hit all the, all my talking points, at least. When I made my maiden speech, which is like the first speech that, you know, the City Council, a city councillor, newly-elected city councillor. So it's like the first time you talked.
Right, okay.
The first time I spoke on the floor, it was around the Black and Brown Economic Empowerment Agenda. And, and part of that agenda is making sure that all of our neighborhoods are destination neighborhoods, right? And it's how do we create those neighborhoods to become destinations? You gotta give them the tools, right? So one of the things that we did, and that, you know, have been awarded this year, was make sure that every neighborhood in the City of Boston has the opportunity to have a sit-down restaurant, right? Because if someone's going to Little Haiti, someone's going to Little Saigon, if someone, they want to be able to sit down and taste, you know, the food of the neighborhood.
Right, right.
Right. We was able to pass the largest, I suppose prohibition, the largest distribution of, or liquor license.
Liquor license. That was, that was huge.
Yeah. And, and the beautiful thing about this legislation, and shout out to all my colleagues that helped secure this big win, was that it's tied to the neighborhood. Like, these liquor licenses cannot go anywhere.
Anywhere else.
So we have to get, we have to continue to give our community the tools in order to attract the tourism that stays in the Bat Bay, that stays in the Seaport, that stays at Faneuil Hall. We need to pull it over here. But then we also need to be able to, be able to provide our, our community, our residents, you know, myself. Like, I want to be able to go down and sit down and watch the game and have a drink and eat a lobster BLT from the mix. And now we can do that, right? To be more, more event spaces and more restaurants that we're gonna do that at. But also, we are pushing for a cultural district inside of Carmen Square. Like I said, the, the community is a melting pot. We have, we have the Haitian community, we have the Latino community, we have the Caribbean community. And we can, we could create a district that is reflective of all of those cultures. We have the Black community, right? We could create a district that's reflective of all those cultures and celebrate that in Carmen Square, and attract people to the square, and create that vibrancy that destination, that we want, right? That we want. And also that, that will bring the, the money from other parts of the region into our neighborhood. So that is the goal.
Right, right, right in the, right in the, right in the sweet spot. And you know it's gonna be very tasty, and there's gonna be a whole lot of stuff to do. You know, no, that is, you know, that's great news. You know, like I said, I'm, I'm just excited to be part of Boston at this point in time, because I think that is truly what equity looks like, when you see every community be, like, you know, Chinatown, we love it, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you know, North End, we love it. But there are other communities, and all of them should have something to do. I mean, now, we'll talk, you know, we'll talk about access and other things later, because that's now the next hurdle is true. But before we go into that, I wanted to know, because you see now, one of the issues is also the, like, there's some historic African-American sites, okay? So this is just, before anybody else got here, these are our historic sites. And, you know, you know, I do, I do work in culture development, I give away free DNA tests African-Americans, let them know their tribes in Africa and things like that. Just, you know, there's like communal, like, so, I'm going all this to say Nubian Square, right, is pretty much like, I think we have to kind of be urgent with Nubian Square, because I think it is the infrastructural heart of Boston. The move of the orange line from Rox, from, from Dan Dudley to Roxbury Crossing, sort of like Route 66, you know, like when the highways go, and they bypass like a community that used to be thriving, and then they put the highway in. And now, that's kind of what happened to there, all the way down to Franklin Park and Matapan. And, you know, I mean, the historic data is actually very clear. Spread, you know, the Jewish white flight out of there was, you know, because of the disconnection from the heart of the city. So that space, you know, Madison Park, Technical Vocational School, all the way down, we actually, we have to, we have to talk later about the Once Upon a Time in Nubian Square walking tour that we launched this last, on Tuesday. But we take people to the, you know, the Madison Park Field, right? That was the heart of the community, right? Vernon Street used to cut right across the back of there, all the way out to Trumont. So there's nothing to tell that story. And there's not enough cultural infrastructure to tell the story of African-American community, and kind of explain why it's Nubian Square. Well, you know, my work, especially in the African-American realm, is extremely important to me, because, like, there are no real African-American clusters again in Boston, right? Yeah, I, you know, I champion Wally's, you know, the last grain of sand in that beach. I championed the Coast Cafe, because that was 70% African-American back in the day. So what, do you have, I mean, like, these cultural districts, I know that was a long way, but I had to set it up. The, you know, how, how do you see, like, you know, cultural infrastructure, you know, spaces for, you know, like communal learning, you know, like, you know, like, just like, because the monuments are not culturally making relevant statements, is that what you mean? Yeah.
Yeah, you know, and I think, you know, to your point, we need, you know, more education, and not, not just podcasts, and reading, and books, but we need, you know, walking tours, right? We need walking tours. We need to invest on the deep history that is in our neighborhoods when it comes to Black and African-American history. And there's so much, you know, deep history when it comes to, you know, Black and African-American history here in the City of Boston. And I think that, you know, it might, not a lot of people in Boston or in the country is aware that Boston, you know, back in the 60s, has, was like a Black Mecca.
Right. That's what they're doing. Talk, speak on it, brother.
Yeah. And, you know, we talk about Martin Luther King, Malcolm, Malcolm X, Rebecca Lee Crumpler, you talk about Edward Brooke, you talk about the first Black public school. And we talking about Boston right now.
I mean, are we talking about Boston? Are we talking about Boston?
We're talking about Boston right now. We're talking about, you know, the first elected by popular vote US Senator. Like, we're talking about Boston.
Boston. We're talking, we're talking about, we're talking about, I love this game. We're talking about Bill Russell, first Black head coach, the Boston Celtics. I mean, we're talking about Boston, right?
Yeah, you're talking about the first, you know, person to split, spill their blood for this country. We're talking about a Black man here in Boston. a black man here in Boston.
The first, you know, I, I, I'm gonna talk to you about, um, the new tour that was, it's called New Guinea Joy. Right? The first black settlement of recognized free black settlement in the history of America was in the North End.
Oh, wow.
Called the New Guinea Settlement. There are a few of them that are buried in Coxville. But there's like one, one bent over and the black section where there's, you won't know the black section, cause it looks like some grass. Right? That Phyllis Wheatley is reportedly buried there and nobody, no, no tombstone does. We think her husband and her, her and her husband are here. This way they should have been, you know, like.
All that is Boston. I think that, um, you know, the movies don't, don't really speak to that anymore, right? So, and that, you know, the tourism doesn't get on the side of town. Yeah, it doesn't talk about it, but that's the history.
Yeah, that's, that's the history. But you know, there's no access to some of these things. So I tried to do an event at the African Meeting House and it was like thirty seven hundred dollars. I just keep it real. Like, I mean, I was like, I love some Frederick Douglass, but I can't do it. I wanted to do, you know, an event there. So we have.
We're trying to find ways to set up more, um, and, you know, all those walking tours. I think there was, you know, we're trying to, you know, put Q R codes so that, you know, when you pass like a, a monument or a statue or a house. You know, you could use your phone and it would bring up the information or maybe even the video. So we are trying to invest and finding different ways to educate, um, you know, Bostonians and also, you know, the tourism on, on the, on the rich history, on the rich.
Right, 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 you know? No, I completely agree, but you know, and even like we, there's no, like, you know, I go to the Western Museum. You know, and they've been very supportive of our work, but that in of itself, cause it was a multicultural community. But also it's like, we need a, the same kind of thing in Roxbury to tell about the African American urban and all. And what happened to these communities and let people know these stories. You know, so there's a lot of, uh, you know, and I, and I, and you know, for the B P S kids out there listening, you know, what, they, they don't know where they stand in the struggle, cause the history is not there. Tell them, oh, you accomplished this. Your, you know, your people did this. And without that story, and you know, kids, you know, kids, they need to touch, taste, smell, right? It's not a, you know, you get them interested in the conversation, then you're now leading to some books. But before, how you gonna get them to read the books if you don't get their, you know, their mouth watering, right? And, and there's literally, I take them on walking tour and like, and, you know, I, I start that tour and I go, this is the tour of things to show you things that are not there anymore. And I think that says a lot.
Right.
How, you know, telling about Tree Mountain Street, how it was the main strip. You know, the, you know, and, you know, like, cause they need to know so that they can help build, they, we need them to build this, you know?
Right.
You know, you know, for us.
Yeah, no, and, and to that point, like, you know, we need them to take, you know, the work forward, you know, when, when we're, you know, sitting back watching them on T V.
Right.
The only way, you know, to kinda, um, you know, making sure that, you know, they continue that is, is definitely through the history. And I know that, you know, a, a lot of the counselors, a lot of my coun- colleagues, um, believe in making sure that that investment is there. And, um, I think we took a, I think we voted on a resolution not too long ago to continue making investments um, inside of, um, these historic trails.
Right. No, no, we really, we really appreciate that, cause like I said, these kids need to know about, you know, St. Cyprian's and all the different beautiful things that they had and that, that are, some are still there, some are not. So that's awesome, awesome. What time? I'm just losing time tracking the whole. Ah, I'm like, we having a good old conversation.
Yeah, that is good, man. I love talking about, you know, everything we're talking about, housing, black history.
You know, you know, um, so I, you know, I, I did do a, uh, one with Barry, uh, Dr. Rager guy, Yither. And Dart Adams, you know, we're talking about, you know, cause the basic thing is that actually the displacement is what keeps the racial wealth gap. Um, going, because you just need to be in place long enough, uh, you know, to succeed.
Yeah, and to that point, like, a lot of people, and, and this is correct, like, like, uh, people associate um, only the, um, the generational wealth or the accumulation of wealth with homeownership, but there's so much more social benefits, right, that come with, um, stabilizing an individual in homeownership. We're talking about educational outcomes, right? Like, there's a lot of more benefits than just the accumulation of wealth, um, that go, that comes with stabilization in homeownership.
Right. No, no, that's, that's it, that's it, that's it, that's it. Um, I think this is the one.
Thirty unit rental market and one of the top real estate markets in the country, and now it's gotten less expensive and more faster for them. But I wanna know, like, what is the benefit? Like, what, what does the community get to reap off of making it more streamlined and more expensive? And I know you guys could, will, will say probably housing, but like, they're, they are increasing their bottom line, right, at the end of the day. So like, what is it that's a tangible? I know you might, guys might say housing, but I wanna hear something other than housing, is what does that tangible give back to the community on? To be more, less expensive and more streamlined. And then the amendment to.
That's my favorite part, when you say, look, okay, but I know you're gonna say housing, but I wanna hear something other than housing. I love that. Oh, man, go, yeah, so I just wanted to play that bit, because that kinda speaks to what you're talking about, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it, and it, you know, just talk, you know, just hitting on that if we're making it faster for people to make rental housing, right, then, then what do we get? Like, what does the community get? And I think that the community, um, needs to be owners. You know, that's what we were talking about this whole thing is, we need to be able to own, um, in order to, um, reap some of the benefits uh, here in the city of Boston. Um, and if we're making things faster, we're making things less expensive. Right? Like, the community should be able to benefit off of making things faster and less expensive. It shouldn't just be, um, those who are um, you know, wealthy, right? Those who have, who are in the know, right? It shouldn't just be those individuals. Those individuals won't be able to reap that, but we should be able to reap some of that as well.
Yeah, a hundred percent. You know, one thing that when you're talking, I just sometimes wonder, you know, cause I can hear the arguments that you're hearing, and I just wonder if, like, are we really putting, setting this narrative correctly? Because you should know that, like, like, uh, you know, um, Councilor Orell, you are part of the first real, like, super crop of people coming in and this new generation of politicians to, you know, address systemic issues. They act like there was nothing you were gonna find when y'all got there. Like, you know, like, you know, like, oh no, there's nothing wrong here. Like, what did you think? Like, it was gonna be like on a sign? This is the kind of like, you know, systemic racist problem. There was not gonna be no sign there to show you what it was. Somebody has to come in from the outside and taking a critical analysis of what the community needs. And then now advocate for that, but the, the way the narrative is structured is as if, you know, and I mentioned this earlier, and we actually had a discussion about Councilor Durkin, cause I know she didn't mean it, but she said that people were not interested in, like, squares and street stuff. And I was offended when she said it, but I knew she didn't really mean it, like, well, she didn't wanna come across as like evil or that, she's not that, but she was just saying what she felt. Um, but this idea that we have communities that we wanna keep in place, and we have communities that get representatives for the, you know, like, we're really, it's probably the most diverse. I'm not sure, but I pretty much, probably the most diverse cabinet and counselor, you have, uh, uh, Ruzy. You know, president, this is radical. But, 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 I mean, how, what can we do to like, help educate that other narrative? Because I think we need to talk directly to that, you know, and not in a confrontational way.
Right.
Where we're trying to say, please accept the history, really. Don't tell us about historic things, but then now we're trying to talk about equity and you don't think infrastructure investment is part of it. You know, it's like, oh, we're gonna do some programs, we're gonna, you know, and yeah, no, it's time for infrastructural.
Yeah, no, you, you're speaking my, you're speaking my language and, you know, whether it's housing or education, right? It's, it's like the whole infrastructure needs to change to produce the outcomes that, you know, we are looking for, right?
Right.
Not, not what you're looking for, right? It's like the outcome that we're looking for. And I think that we need to be very specific on what we are asking for. Uh, cause sometimes, um, you know, words can be defined in so many different ways, right? So someone says affordable housing, he's like, alright, let me give you affordable rentals. Oh, we have affordable housing for you guys and we leave the country or we're top three in the country in affordable housing. Uh, or we, we made a thousand affordable housing opportunities available. But we need to be, um, a lot more specific, um, where, um, on creating our ask. Um, and then we also just need to, um, dive into the numbers and bring their, bring their reports. Right? Uh, there's so much information in, in reports that get, um, that, you know, not only the city produces, but, you know, other nonprofits, um, produce as well. The, the, um, the Boston Foundation, they produce a report every year um, on the housing report card. Um, in that, in that, in that, um, study, there is so much information that we can use to point to, to tell, tell, um, the housing infrastructure or to push, um, um, you know, these these infrastructures to, to change.
Your, your, your sound is a bit, I don't know, it's a bit choppy now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Yes, I'm gonna be pushing for a, a study to create a, um, a, a, a study to understand the different impact that, of my son. Yes, sir. I'm here.
The bosses are in the house. These are the real bosses of the house, we think.
Uh, yeah, so we wanna create a study to understand the different type of housing. How, how different type of housing have impacted our community, right? So does the creation of, you know, kinda similar to what we talked about, is the creation of one bedrooms disproportionately push um, pos-, you know, working class Bostonians and more, um, particularly black and brown Bostonians out of the city of Boston.
Right.
Does, you know, um, you know, one bedroom or does single level condos? You know, what kinda impact does that have on these communities? We wanna do a deeper dive to create that baseline and hopefully we can use that data to gen, you know, point to the, um, you know, the planning department and say, well, here goes all the data that you need in order to, um, provide to the, to, to the developers on what we need as a community.
No, no, that, I mean, there's so much needed. I mean, we just need, you know, we need to talk, you know, get our numbers and right, but I also, you know, like, that's why, like, I, like, you know, like, what I'm really, like, even with the development of the tours, those tours are branded. I have the Jewish Dorchester, I have Once Upon a Time in Nubian Square. New Guinea, New Guinea Joy, that's like three areas. But what I'm saying, like, you, we have to develop our own infrastructure in our communities. Um, and, um, you know, provide resources and, you know, bring our people together and that's, you know, cause so we did, we did last week, it wasn't a lot of people that came, but trying to bring, even with the people that come, they're never, you know, I'm the darkest and I'm the youngest out of all the people.
I mean, what are you, like, thirty?
Bruh, bruh, no, I'm not.
You're right, education is a big part of it. And, you know, we gotta get on the same page as the community on what we're asking for.
Right, so, but, but that, but that, but then we need resources. We need resources to community organize.
Right, right.
And this is something that, you know, like, so like the event we did on Saturday, that was what, you know, we had the models. We had drone pictures with like superimposed, you know, like what the building size would look at and we had snacks and all this other stuff, but, you know, cause in a way you want, if you to make, you have to kinda make it appealing, you have to make it, you know? You know, it's an event of sorts, which is what kinda what we're doing next week. I mean, well, this Saturday with the, um, yoga and all the other things we're gonna be having. Like, we have to get people together, but that infrastructure is, we need to create that, like, that's where I.
Oh, you're talking about, alright, like the education, the places where people can learn it? I agree. Yeah, and this is why I like, like, these platforms, cause it gives us the opportunity to create that community, cause now people are listening to you, Marlon, right? They're tuning in to Red Line narrative because it's a community. It might not be like the physical community, but it's a place where people can get educated, where people can, you know, hear from um, other, other individuals that are doing this work and then also start to come to your events. I think, you know, not only those physical spaces, but also, you know, the media, right? The media and these podcasts are very important, um, cause not everyone can make it every time.
Right, right, right. We have to make it in their pocket, so they can, yeah, you know, on the way to work.
And, and then hopefully through the, through these communities and these gatherings, that we could create a collective goal. And then we understand what it is, you know, what we need to do to get to that collective goal. Is it, you know, maybe you need, maybe we need to start advocating for bigger, um, condo complexes in our neighborhoods for everyone to be able to be a homeowner? Maybe we need to start, uh, teaming up and, um, investing in some of our developers and, you know, like crowdfunding, right? Maybe like there's a community crowdfunding with black developers to build the type of housing that we need, but everyone get on that same page.
Right.
Like, we start to execute, right? So the goal needs to be established and then how do we get to that goal? Like you were saying early, like, how do we reverse engineer, you know, this thing?
Right. No, I mean, and that's, uh, I mean, that's, well, we are definitely speaking the light, the right language today, cause I mean, like, that, that just, you know, it's so difficult to try and explain so many different, like, you know, but you, we have to let people know that when they hear affordable, it's not what you think it means.
Right.
Well, you know, like, I mean, this is, you know, and I try, you know, in my, uh, I try in the work to talk in those simple terms, like, we don't say S one, S two, even though the, the people who do the research, they still be messing up saying it, but I'd be like, don't say it like that. Say five floors, say seven floors, because they get stuck in their own silos, you know what I'm saying? So they, you know, um, there's a lot of work to do, but I do think that the most important thing is to get everybody educated, so they know that they're like, you're, you're not advocating for what you think you're advocating.
Right.
You put a health center in the location, it sounds good, but now that area is more valuable inherently, even if it is good for the community. And if you're doing this health center, does, you know, for a community of, that looks like this, but because you put it there, it's gonna look like something else.
Right, right.
Protections.
Yeah, and, and to that point, like, we need to prioritize, right? Right, we, there, there's steps, right? So we don't wanna get too far ahead, you know? We wanna make sure that we put protections in place and have everything, you know? Cause we wanna keep our community here. We wanna stay.
Right, right.
We want, you know, individuals that grew up here, we wanna give them the opportunity to be able to buy here, right? And then also to, you know, experience the same resources and the same, you know, things that the city of Boston has given to all of us. So we wanna make sure that we don't skip any steps, that other generations are not being able to benefit off the resources in this great city.
Right, to, to close off, you know, like, cause now one of the, 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 um, inhibitions that we're having is that, okay, the North End has no fast food. Erable. I don't know, fast food is allergic to the North End, that's all I can say. Newberry. Harvest Square. Chinatown has a Dunkin' Donuts with Chinese letters, so I know that's in-house.
Well, Newberry Street has Shake Shack.
Well, Shake Shack, I get it, is, you can call it fast food. I'm talking about a normal McDonald's. That's a different level. Right, right, right. So, so, you know, there are like two to three more times of these kind of, is, um, infrastructure. That is also infrastructure.
It is, it is.
Yeah, gas, you know, uh, greasy gas burning, uh, frying stuff. So the infrastructure is here to fry and to do all this. Right.
Yeah.
How do we create the spaces? Cause like, I'm very, very keen. The main issue is that, yes, we get people to live there, but they need to be able to.
They need the amenities, right? They need the amenities. They need the healthy food. Right, they need a whole community.
Right, not the little pieces of the community, or what you think is affordable or sellable in the community. Cause remember, we don't have the community because of y'all decided, they decided that they wanna put a highway through it. So let's just be very clear, there's nobody, there would have been a community. That would have been just as historic and just as. And just as beautiful as what you see in Fane Hall, all these areas are just as old, so.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on, you know, working with landlords on helping them. Um, attract the businesses that we need here, uh, we've been also through like the space grants, um, which is. We're running out of the space grant now, um, but we were able to um, um, direct. Uh, well, a lot of the businesses had to fit in certain categories that we believed added value to neighborhoods. So whether it was like a daycare, whether it was um event space, and these were things that we were hearing from the community. On what type of businesses they wanted in the neighborhood. And something cool that, um, the Common Square. Um, Neighborhood Council and the Common Square, and you see that they, they, they did a study on, on what, what we call leakage. Like, what are we, what are we leaving our neighborhoods for? Um, so understanding what we are leaving our neighborhoods for and then trying to. Attract those businesses, like, if we're leaving for, you know, um, fixing our computers, let's try to find, you know, a microcenter. Or a, a place that can fix computers and bring it to the neighborhood. Uh, maybe we have to create some sort of incentive or assistance um for that to happen, but. Those are the conversations that we need to have with the landlord and the businesses, but like, one of my major things is, I want to attract. I was just telling one of my um colleagues this um earlier today, I want to attract a anchor business here, here in Dorchester. Uh, whether it's, you know, a place where, um, in, 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 maybe I'm a little. Maybe it's a, I'm trying to think of a company, maybe it's an AI company that they could have, you know, twenty or thirty. Office, not twenty or thirty offices or ten floors, you know, on American Legion Highway where that McDonald's and Cinco's is. Imagine if that was office space and residential homeownership property with sit-down restaurants and daycares. And a place you could fix your computer, right? So it's like, how do we bring that vision to life? And then like, that will start to.
Yeah, especially if you have the protection in place, if you have the protection in place, then people won't be able, they won't, like, they'll be able to get the benefit. That, that goes to what you were saying earlier, about what does the community get? Can we get the benefits for a while to build ourselves around these benefits?
Exactly.
Enough so that we can, uh, so these places will be self-sustaining, you know, I, I don't know. Uh, Chief Shagunidou that was saying, um, um, that, um. That like how much money has been lost because of race, like, you know, like, if you, if, if every person was given an opportunity in the sixties. By now, they would be, you know, we wouldn't be having no wealth gap, because.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Good study on that is the Massachusetts Taxpayer Foundation. It was speaking to that if black and brown. Um, people were to graduate at the same rate, college at the same rate, then the city, right? Like the, like the state, the amount of revenue that will be generated will be like, I can't remember what it was, but it was like hundreds of millions of dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
It is crazy.
I always, I say racism is the most anti-capitalistic thing I can actually think of, if you really think.
It, 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 it really is, it really is, right.
It's so anti-capitalist, like.
Yeah, yeah, and it, 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 to that point, right, it's like, it's racism that creates those barriers for us not to, you know. Get educated at the same rate.
Yeah, like, like, we wouldn't be shopping at your stores, like, we won't, like, we won't have more money to shop at your stores.
Yeah, that's exactly what it would be, right?
Right, we, you wouldn't have to be complaining about, oh, welfare or anything, cause we wouldn't need it, I mean, we'd be good.
Yeah, we'll have more money to, to spend at your big businesses.
Right, and create some business, I think it was also about the competition, cause they don't want to compete against our businesses, I think that's also.
Yeah, that, that could be it.
Right, that's also part of it, but anyway, we could go, look like we could go on for a long.
Yeah, yeah, we, we could do it again, Marlon, let's do it again, alright?
Again, so I want to thank everyone for, uh, I hope you enjoyed this conversation with, uh, District Four, Boston City Councilor. Uh, Brian Rowell, and definitely I want to get your brother, I be, I, I, I definitely want to hook up with him as well, cause I know that's even on another level. So I can't, you know, we was, you know, we'll definitely do that, and uh, yeah, we want to thank everyone for, um, um. Helping out with the podcast, if you want to support us, please do African American Culture Initiative, Engineering, Restorative Bridges. And Underserve Multicultural Communities, thank you very much and have a great rest of your week.